Regular meeting number nine will now come to order. Will you please stand for the playing of the National Anthem? Councilmember Tyson, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is pleased to have Dr. Judy Ausen, Pastor Woodland Christian Church, to lead us in prayer. Pastor, welcome to council.
It's good to be back. Let us pray. Creator, Sustainer, and Giver of life, the one who is known by many names and beyond all names. First, we begin by giving you thanks for this day and all its blessings. On this afternoon, as we gather here today as servants and citizens of the city of Columbus, we pray that we are all ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to our fellow citizens and to this community. Gracious one, on this day, we seek your help with our affairs. We ask that you bless us as we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make for the good of all of those who have placed their trust and confidence in this leadership. Give them insight to lead with integrity that their decisions may reflect what is right and good. As council sits here to do the work today, we pray that the spirit of life, the spirit of love, the spirit of community, the spirit of justice, will give them patience to be compassionate and helpful toward one another, to listen and to know when it is best to remain quiet. Give them clarity, give them capacity for love and forgiveness, give them knowledge to make decisions that are for the good of the city and its citizenry. Give them the capability to live and be present in this moment, give them the understanding of the embattled individuals in our city who are struggling and the willingness to do something about it. Give them the perspective to see the bigger picture and give them the potential to change what they can change and to do what they can do to make our city a better place. All of these things we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold to be good and right and true. May it be so. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Reamy, Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Reamy, Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Will the clerk now read? Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
No, sir.
The first item of business for council this evening is the appointment of a new member of Columbus City Council to fill the vacated seat, a former council member, Michael Stenziano. Will the clerk now read President Pro Tem Stenziano's letter of resignation into the record?
Dated February 4, 2019, addressed to President Shannon Harden. Dear President Harden, please accept this letter as my formal resignation effective Friday, February 22, 2019, as President Pro Tem and as a member of the Columbus City Council to assume my new responsibilities as auditor of Franklin County, Ohio. I've enjoyed working with you, council members Elizabeth and Mitchell Brown, Shayla Favor, Emmanuel Reamy, and Priscilla Tyson, as well as former members Jaisa Page and former President Zack Klein, to build better neighborhoods, promote inclusive communities, support cost-efficient infrastructure improvements, and provide better-paying, good jobs for all Columbus residents. Thank you for the guidance and help you have given me along the way. In addition, thank you to the departments, their staffs, and the employees of our city for your ongoing commitment to the residents and businesses of our city. Best wishes to you, council staff, city administrators, and city employees, and all residents of Columbus as we continue to work together to make Columbus the very best community in America. Bueno, fortuna, Michael Stenziano, council, President Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and again, thank you to President, former President Pro Tem Stenziano for his service on this council. Before I ask for a motion and nomination to fill this vacancy, I would just say that the 15 folks, including Councilmember Favor, who went through this process, really need to be amended. They have gone through a process that has been longer, more in-depth, more open, and more public than any process this council or any council in Columbus has been through in the past. They have shown the caliber of folks who want to serve in our community, and they have distinguished themselves, each and every one of them. They could all serve with us on Columbus City Council. We knew, however, going into this process, that we had two seats to select for out of the 57 folks that applied, and so that this day would come where we would have one final seat to appoint to, and that 13 folks unfortunately would not be joining us this evening. But that does not speak at all to the true, true readiness of these folks. These folks are ready to serve and have been serving this community. For that, me as council president, I'm very, very grateful and look forward to working with each and every one of them in whatever capacity moving forward. At this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations to fill the vacancy of member of city council. Are there any motions? Are, the floor is now open.
Councilmember Tyson. I nominate Rob Dorans.
Are, second. Are there any other nominations? Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Ms. Favor? Mr. Reamy? Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Congratulations, Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember Dorans will have a public swearing-in ceremony, which will be announced at a later date. Please note for the record that committee assignments will be read into the record when the newly appointed council member Dorans is seated at our regular meeting on March 11 at 5:00 p.m. We will now take a five-minute recess and will return to continue business in the regular meeting. May I have a motion to recess, regular meeting number nine? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Reamy, Tyson, President Harden.
We are now in recess. Be back in five minutes. May I have a motion to reconvene, regular meeting number nine? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Reamy, Tyson, President Harden.
Are there any resolutions by members of council? Start with Councilmember Brown. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember Reamy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I would like to invite Laura Kaprowski, Doug Arsnow, Belinda Taylor, and Travis Buzzkirk to the podium as I introduce Resolution 0062X 2019 to recognize and honor Thursday, February 14, 2019, as Ohio Loves Transit Day in the city of Columbus. Ohio Loves Transit Day took place on Thursday, February 14 to recognize outstanding public transportation in Ohio. Tonight, I want to highlight the amazing work of our local public transportation, the Central Ohio Transit Authority, otherwise known as COTA. In Columbus, Ohio, residents have relied on COTA millions of times to arrive safely at home, work, and school, and innumerable other destinations. Seniors and people with disabilities have utilized COTA's mainstream program for over a quarter of a million rides. COTA directly employs over 1,150 Ohioans, including hundreds of transit operators, and supports thousands of additional jobs through their work. We are thankful for the work of the CW, or I'm sorry, the Transportation Workers Union, Local 208, who work hard every day to get people where they need to go safely. 3,030 stops along 43 routes operated by COTA help connect Columbus residents to one another while reducing wear on public roads, levels of traffic, and most especially, carbon emissions. COTA's deployment of almost 150 compressed natural gas buses protects Ohio's air, water, and environmental future while also supporting Columbus as a growing green city. The outstanding work done by COTA since 1974 in providing Central Ohioans with affordable and reliable transportation is deserving of this recognition, not just for tonight, but for every day. Laura, Doug, Belinda, the floor is yours.
Well, thank, thank you so much, Councilman Reamy, President Harden, and all the council members. It's really very fulfilling to all of us to end Ohio Loves Transit here with all of you because your support of COTA has been longstanding, and it's really one of the key reasons why we are one of the few transit authorities in the country with growing ridership. Last year, our ridership grew by 3%. We're almost at 9 million rides, and we're also so proud that we're continuing to celebrate as the number-one mid-sized transit authority in the country. And that's because this community and our city leaders help support innovation, such as our C-MAX first bus rapid transit, our partnership with Smart Columbus, and always pushing us, all of you are always pushing us to be innovative and think mindfully about all of our customers. So whether it is technology, we still have to be mindful that our customers need it to be easy and affordable in transportation. And there's no time like the present for this conversation. We spent a lot of time this month during Ohio Loves Transit at the State House, taking the message and the success of Columbus, talking with 14 legislators, holding events, and showing them what we do in this community. But we also need their investment, just like this city and these residents have invested in COTA. So we're going to keep fighting and sending that message, and on behalf of our bus operators, our vehicle maintenance, our customer service employees, those are the front lines, and we value their work. They make our work here, Belinda, Doug, and I, very easy because their service is exceptional. So thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? President Harden?
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd just say that I appreciate COTA's work in providing the space and leadership for conversation about where we go next. As this community grows and adds a million people, we know that we won't be able to add just a million more cars over the next 30 years, and so the role that COTA will play in coming up with our transit options is one that is just appreciated from this body. I also can say that I had a chance to read President Pinkerton's letter to the editor over the weekend, supporting the gas tax that is proposed. There's an important conversation going on in Ohio right now about transit and transportation as it pertains to the gas tax, and it's one that will be really important for us, having, understanding what the, what the resources would go to and how they would be used and how they would help this specific conversation is one that I just appreciated her leadership in and look forward to standing shoulder to shoulder with her as we continue to make our city, our region, and our state more transit-friendly. So thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Reamy, Tyson, President Harden.
I also have one announcement. I will be holding my last community hours, meetings for the month of February, tomorrow, Tuesday, February 26, from 4:30 to 6:00, at Tim Horton's at 2550 South Hamilton Road. All are welcome. That's all I have this evening for announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Favor.
No announcements at this time.
Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you. I have one resolution, and it is 0072X-2019, and I am going to ask Troy Johnson and Omar Walter, Ezekiel Peoples, and Dale Gresham to come towards the podium, and certainly all the rest of the alphas can also come up too, but thank you. This resolution is to thank the members of Alpha Rhola Lambda Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated for their ongoing commitment to instilling character, responsibility, and leadership into the young men of this community through the, through the Project Alpha program. Whereas Project Alpha began in 1980 as part of a collaborative effort between Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, the Inc., the National Office, and the March of Dimes Birth Defects Foundation. Whereas the Project Alpha program is comprised of a series of workshops and informational sessions conducted by the members of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc., Incorporated. The program is designed to provide education, motivation, and skill-building on issues relating to responsible relationships, teen pregnancy, and sexually transmitted diseases for young men ages 12 to 18 years of age. The program also provides young men with current and accurate information regarding teen pregnancy and prevention. Whereas the goals of the Project Alpha program include sharing knowledge and combating ignorance and fear with factual information, changing attitudes by providing young men with motivational examples that promote positive changes in sexual behavior, and provide young men with skills that create a sense of empowerment and lifts their self-esteem. Whereas the program highlights include providing education to young men regarding sexuality, fatherhood, the roles, the role of males in relationships, motivating young men to make decisions regarding their goals, values, and actions, and ways that support positive decision-making, helping young men to build life skills through role-playing and using appropriate males as role models and mentors. Whereas Project Alpha curriculum focuses on five key topics: responsibility, respect, and the role of men in relationships, adolescent pregnancy, and fatherhood, teaching young men to protect themselves and their partners, sexually transmitted diseases, and intimate violence in, in relationships. Whereas the Columbus Chapter of the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, the Alpha Rhola Lambda Chapter will be conducting their annual free interactive education conference for Project Alpha on March 16 of 2019, from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Capital University in the Bridge of Learning Building. Whereas this, this year, the program is seeking to reach and educate 100 young men from Central Ohio, the Project Alpha 2019 theme is "Learning to Live Your Truth," with topics which include good choices, avoiding substance abuse, healthy relationships, safe sex and STI prevention, interaction with law enforcement, with law enforcement, and behavior versus rights. The program will, will consist of a host of professional speakers, presentations, small groups, fellowship, and giveaways, as well as a continental breakfast and lunch will be provided to those who attend. I'll ask my colleagues, first of all, before I move for passage, I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson to come and, is he going to speak first? Or, or Mr. Peoples? Mr. Peoples, you're first. Correct. All right. Mr. Peoples, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson, and members of the city council, as well as President Harden. My name is Ezekiel Peoples, and I have the distinct pleasure of serving as the president of the Alpha Rhola Lambda Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. I have brought along with me Mr. John, Brother Johnson, who serves as the chair for the Project Alpha Initiative, so you will hear about that. I also have with us our Director of Educational Activities, Brother Landon Adams, who will share with you a little bit of information as well. But just first and foremost, we're thankful to be here in the city of Columbus. Alpha Rhola Lambda is going to be celebrating 90 years this year. We were founded December 21, 1929. Our general organization was founded December 4, 1906, at Cornell University, Ithaca, New York. The gentlemen that stand before you today is just a small sample of the brothers that are in the city of Columbus. We have over 500 members in the city of Columbus. We stand on the shoulders of brothers like Thurgood Marshall, Dr. King, and our own Ohio's Jesse Owens. So I just wanted to give you guys a little snapshot about our fraternity, and now you will hear a little bit from our Director of Educational Activities.
Good evening. Alpha Phi Alpha actually has four national programs. A Voteless People is a Hopeless People project, which is our voter registration, education, and civic engagement initiative. We have our own version of My Brothers Keeper, which is actually our Senior Brothers Initiative, where we work to support our senior and aging brothers, as well as the widows of our brothers who have deceased, as well as go to high school, go to college, which is our effort, of course, to keep kids in school successful and matriculating into the undergraduate and further level. And then, of course, our Project Alpha, which we're here to talk about this evening, so I ask Brother Johnson to come forward.
Thank you. Good evening. Councilman Tyson, we thank you for this recognition. As you mentioned earlier, Project Alpha this year will be in collaboration with Capital University and their director, Omar Waters, and the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. We seek to reach 100 young men this year. We're trying to change lives of our young men in Columbus. Alpha Rhola Lambda Chapter has been presenting this program for 25 years. We have reached over 2,000 young men and hopefully have affect change in their lives. If you have anyone who's interested in becoming a part of the program, they can go to our website at www alphacolumbus.com, click on the Programs link, and then the Alpha, Project Alpha link from that, and it will direct them to our registration, as well as our consent for parents' consent. So once again, we'd like to thank you for this recognition, and we will continue to move onward and upward as we strive to fulfill the mission of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, which is to develop leaders to promote brotherhood and academic excellence while providing service and advocacy for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and I want to say thank you to each of the alphas that are here, and certainly, I always let people say their names, so you can walk through and do that. But I also just want to share this. This work is so important that you're doing. You know, I create a commission on black girls with the support of my council, and certainly, we want to make sure that the same age group, 11 to 22, that, it's very important that we make sure that we're helping girls to move forward, but also, we also need to make sure that our boys are moving forward. And so with the work that you're doing, as being, number one, strong mentors, everyone needs a mentor, and so we're thankful that you're doing that. But I also, it's, this is so important, I'm so excited you're doing this work, because what we realize in the city of Columbus, in regards to health, that, one, our young people, we do not teach sex education in the classroom. And so what happens is, individuals kind of learn any way they can, and we know that's not, that's not the best policy. But we also, in the city of Columbus, if we think about some of the numbers that I think that, why it's important to talk about STIs, is that we know that African-American rates, three times higher than whites are people living with HIV. We know that, and males are four times higher than females. But we also know that our African-American males, that blacks are almost nine times more likely than whites to have gonorrhea. They're six times more likely than whites to have chlamydia. They're almost three times more likely to have syphilis, and they're three times more likely to be newly diagnosed with HIV, and two times as likely to have HIV and AIDS. At a time when these diseases are continuing to go down in other communities, they're rising in this community, and especially with our young people. So that's why this work that you're doing, because we've got to turn that around, that our young men have to be educated, they have to be protecting themselves, should they be having sex, you know? We have to teach them all of this information. And so I appreciate what each of you are doing to make a difference in the lives of our young people, and so, again, I give you a my, a grateful thank you for what you're doing. I'm going to ask my colleagues, do you have any comments you want to make? All right. Seeing none, I move for pass, move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Favor, Reamy, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And now, you can, everyone can come, say their names, and we can all, and we'll...
Good evening. Curtis Walker, board member of March of Dimes Central Ohio, and brother of Alpha Rhola Lambda, Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated.
Brother Charles Hill.
Dale Gresham, thank you for having us.
Brother Corey Favor.
Brother Omar Walter.
Brother Lawrence Lemon.
Brother Carl Williams.
Brother Michael Childs.
Brother Dave Rogers.
Brother Robert Coleman.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. At this point, I'd like to invite Pastor Joel, Stephanie Espinal, Austin McCabe Junkie, and Pastor Sally to the podium. Tonight, I'm introducing Resolution 73X-2019 to support Edith Espinal and Miriam Vargas and their families as welcome residents in the city of Columbus. The point of this resolution is simple, yet powerful. It states that, in Columbus, we support our residents, and we support keeping families together. And secondly, that our federal immigration system is broken, and aggressive deportation tactics hurt families and hurt our community. I don't do this often, but tonight, I'm going to read most of this resolution. It states, whereas both Edith Espinal and Miriam Vargas have been residents of Columbus for more than a decade and are raising families in this community, and whereas, the United States is a nation of immigrants, where, since its founding, people like Edith and Miriam have come to seek protection from persecution and enjoy freedoms of our nation, and in doing so, they have bolstered our economy and stitched the fabric of American life. Whereas aggressive deportation tactics, like those used to target Edith, Miriam, and other parents impose tremendous financial strains on families, can result in the placement of children in the foster care system and unnecessarily burden state and local resources while removing productive residents and caregivers from the community. And whereas, Edith Espinal have been, and Miriam have been granted sanctuary by Columbus Midnight Church and the First English Lutheran Church, respectively, as they pursue legal remedies to remain with their families. Whereas, to keep parents with their children and prevent the impacts of aggressive deportation tactics have on Columbus, city council created the Columbus Families Together Fund to provide legal services and resources to families in need. And whereas, by keeping these families, families together, no matter their race, creed, or origin, be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus, that this council does hereby recognize Edith Espinal, Miriam Vargas as longtime residents of the city of Columbus, support their respective efforts to remain with and provide for their families, and encourage the United States Department of Homeland Security to grant favorable exercise of prosecutorial discretion with regard to their cases. Although a city resolution does not change federal immigration law, it is important for this community to show our support for our neighbors. Are there any comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, President Harden. Thank you for introducing this resolution, and thank you to those of you who are here today representing two women who can't be here because they are forced to stay in sanctuary. And Edith and Miriam are Columbocites. are forced to stay in sanctuary. And Edith and Miriam are Columbasites. They are residents of our city. They are mothers raising their families, and they're contributing to the economy, the vitality, and the future of Columbus. It's no secret that our immigration system is broken. It's, it is subject to administrative discretion and amounts to basically, kind of a kangaroo court. Unfortunately, Miriam and Edith are at its mercy. And fortunately, they do have church homes in this city who have taken them under their wing, but they are still not with their families, and that is of concern to this council. We know that needlessly breaking apart families through aggressive deportation weakens our city and our country, and the well-being of immigrant communities is intertwined with our overall well-being as a city. There's no documented Columbus and undocumented Columbus. There's one Columbus, where safer, more just, and more successful city and society when we address the needs of all of our residents. I want to thank Council President Harden for introducing this resolution tonight, and to my colleagues. We value our immigrants, and we welcome them. We want to say to immigrants that we know the demonization of immigrants throws you into the shadows and creates a class of silent victims at times. We won't stand for it. By enabling immigrants to live safely and outside the shadows, we increase the public good and the public safety. And it bears repeating, that there, those who say people should enter this country by getting in line if they fear for their lives, there is no line. There is no line if you come from certain countries. Your choice is to take action for the protection of your children, or to do nothing. And as a mother myself, there is nothing I wouldn't do for my children. I know no parent who would say any differently. In fact, that desire has driven people to the United States throughout its history. So to Edith and Miriam, and especially to you, Stephanie, I want your mother to know, and I want Miriam to know, that you are welcome residents of the city of Columbus. Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Are there any other comments before I turn the podium over? I'm going to turn the podium over to first Austin, and then, Pastor, thank you.
President Harden and the rest of the council, thank you for, for this resolution, and the, on the behalf of Miriam and Edith, who cannot be here, as you said, we, we say thank you. This is an important first step to reunite them with their families, and we appreciate that very much. That is what they're trying to do. They are two mothers, just trying to stay with their families. They support the economy, they're law-abiding citizens, and for that, thank you.
Edith and Miriam took a pretty tremendous risk in entering sanctuary, rather than go to ICE as, as commanded to be deported. They entered our church buildings in sanctuary at tremendous personal risk. Our congregations took a risk in having them in. We didn't quite know what that commitment involved, and we're still learning as we go what it's involved. And I just want to acknowledge tonight that council is also taking a risk in passing this resolution. You will get backlash, I'm sure. This is not an easy thing to do, but it's the right thing to do. And so thank you for taking that risk with Miriam and Edith, and with our congregations. One of the things, one of the things this resolution says to me is that there is a place in Columbus for Edith and Miriam, and that place is not inside our church buildings, not locked inside our church buildings, but it's, their place is in their homes, with their families, with the ability to work and enjoy this city like the rest of us. And I also appreciate the resolution calling on the Department of Homeland Security, those who have power to really change their lives, to do, to use their discretion in order for them to return home with their families. So we know that this resolution doesn't get them out of sanctuary, but it, today is a day of hope and a day of celebration for us, for what has been a very long road. Thank you.
I want to start off by saying thank you for passing this resolution. After so many months of my mom fighting for this opportunity, it was finally given to us. This will help us get one step closer for me and my family to be reunited. And this journey has not been easy at all. It's been really difficult for me and my family, but I know that we'll make it, my mom will make it out, and we're going to be together, and thank you all.
Thank you.
From the bottom of my heart, thank you.
So I guess I'm the only one with prepared comments, but, come on, guys. So my name's Austin McCabe Junkie, and I'm a member of the Columbus Mennonite Church, where I've been helping to coordinate our sanctuary work. I stand here representing Edith's community of supporters at Columbus Mennonite Church, and the city of Columbus more broadly. I want to express our gratitude to City Council for their strong resolution of support of Edith. And although this resolution may seem only symbolic, I know that it means much more to those who are involved today. It recognizes that Edith's struggle is one that we will share as members of the Columbus community. Indeed, Edith is a Columbasite, a mother who has lived and worked in this city for over 20 years. Before entering sanctuary, she worked as a line leader in a packaging facility here in Columbus. And like many workers in Columbus, Edith balanced work and family commitments while hoping to make ends meet every month. But as an undocumented immigrant, Edith also had to navigate additional workplace discrimination and precarity. If you talk to Edith, however, it is clear what gives her courage in times of challenge: her family. As a mother, it's Edith's love for her children that sustains her in her current fight to stay united. But most importantly for me, as a member of the faith community standing with Edith, is the fact that Edith is a beloved neighbor, in whom we see the face of Jesus, and in whom something sacred exists. Certainly, there were hesitations and fears among church members about what this commitment to sanctuary would mean, but we chose to step with Edith into the unknown, not because we knew where it would lead, but because we were not willing to let Edith travel alone. Edith has now been living in our building for over 500 days. None of us know what exactly will win Edith relief, and the fight for Edith is far from over. We look forward to council's continued support and all meaningful steps to keep Edith and her family together here in Columbus. We believe that by working and risking together for Edith, we will find a path to freedom. So thank you again, Council President Harden and members of council. Thank you, and thank you to the Mennonite Church and the First English. You guys have been on the front lines of expressing the values that I think are Columbus welcoming and looking out for our neighbor. The, you know, this is a ceremonial resolution. The truth is, when we take this vote in a few seconds, it won't change Edith's or Miriam's predicament. But what I, what is important about this resolution is that we draw attention that these women, these mothers are still, these, our family members are away from their families, that they are in, you know, what could generously be called holy prisons. And as much as we care, and as much as it aches us in our stomachs to think about this, the truth is, we get to go home tonight. And to think that she, that, that, in Edith's case, has been in sanctuary for more than 500 days in Columbus, we know this as Columbus folks, we've seen her story a year ago or so on the, on the TV, but we also put it in the back of our minds. That is not right, and we want to make sure that folks know Edith, folks know Miriam, and folks know Columbus values. With that, with no further comment, I move for adoption. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Barrows?
No, thank you.
Welcome to council. At this time, I request the following ordinance to be removed from the Consent Action portions of the agenda. Are there any other, are there any other requests by members of council for removal of ordinances or resolutions from the Consent Action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may I now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation to tonight's agenda in first reading?
Recreation Parks Committee, ordinance 421, 476, and 497-2019. Economic Development and Small Business Committee, ordinance 507, 545, 546, 547, 563-2019. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, ordinance is 447, 448, 449-2019. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 201, 367, 383, 387, 395, 399, 408, and 412-2019. Rules and Reference Committee, ordinance 313-2019.
Seeing no speakers on the first reading, may, the following ordinance will now appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those orders and numbers into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 63X, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, and 71X-2019. Finance Committee, ordinance is 372, 373, 376, 416, 468, 475-2019. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 288, 422, 478, 479-2019. Education Committee, ordinance 494 and 495-2019. Public Safety Committee, ordinance is 289, 397, 403, 406, 444, 455, 456, 485, 486, and 502-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution 52X-2019, ordinance is 245, 290, 336, 360, 414, 420, and 424-2019. Environment Committee, ordinance 467-2019. Economic Development and Small Business Committee, ordinance 388-2019. Housing Committee, ordinance is 417, 461, 462-2019. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, ordinance is 450, 452, 453, and 454-2019. Neighborhoods Committee, ordinance 285-2019. Technology Committee, ordinance is 299 and 411-2019. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 249, 286, 293, 296, 297, 298, 300, 314, 331, 365, 368-2019. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance is 375, 466, and 503-2019. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0032, 33, 34, and 35-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda, Mr. Tom Katzenmeyer. Didn't even see. Mr. Katzenmeyer, welcome to council. Ms. Katzenmeyer is speaking in favor of ordinance 0373-2019.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Good evening, everyone council members. I'm Tom Katzenmeyer, president of the Greater Columbus Arts Council. I have with me tonight Jamie Goldstein, Sean Kessler, and Allison Barrett. I appreciate them coming over with me. Thanks for the opportunity to address council this evening. On behalf of the GCAC trustees and the arts organizations and artists who benefit from our grants with funds from the city's hotel, motel, bed tax, thank you for your critical support. I also want you to know again how grateful we are for your leadership in passing the ticket fee legislation in December. In 2018, through a variety of grant programs, your funding supported 104 organizations and projects, and 400, 400 individual artist grants. As you know, these funds support our communities' larger arts organizations like the Columbus Museum of Art, the Lincoln Theater, and Pro Musica, but also middle-sized and smaller organizations like the Columbus Children's Theater, Maroon Arts Group, Columbus Gay Men's Chorus, emerging organizations like the South Asia Theater Festival, and neighborhood programs and festivals like Summer Jam West. Just as importantly are the small grants, free workshops, and fellowships to individual artists, which we repeatedly hear are providing life and career-changing resources to artists in all disciplines. One program we are particularly proud of supporting is the Lincoln Theater Expand Your Horizon Incubation Program. Now in its sixth year, the program provides integral training in process and business of art through a year-long fellowship program. To date, 76 artists of color have graduated this program. This funding creates positive impacts at many levels in our community, including one of the more important ones, in my opinion, the more than 1 million arts education experiences provided for Columbus children every year by our grantees. All of this helps build Columbus into a stronger city, but a cornerstone of success is the economic impact created by the cultural sector. A study released in 2017 by Americans for the Arts estimated that Central Ohio's nonprofit arts and cultural community generates nearly half a billion in economic activity, activity and supports 15,000 jobs. Outside of our grant-making, GCAC's work includes the entirely privately-funded Columbus Arts Festival, which an estimated 425,000 people attend every year, and our critically acclaimed Emmy Award-winning marketing campaign, Art Makes Columbus, Columbus Makes Art. We're also proud to be the convener of the Harlem Renaissance at 100 Celebration, and also proud to support the ASE Conference coming in August. So thank you to City Council, the mayor, for your steadfast support, large and small, for the organizations, as well as the funding that enables our artists and organizations to thrive. I was watching it.
Thank you, Mr. Katzenmeyer, and thank you for the work of GCAC and all the organizations that make up your body and the work that you're doing. Are there any questions for Mr. Katzenmeyer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tyson, you have a question?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, please. There's a question.
Yes.
On a different ordinance.
Yes. Thank you, President Harden.
Yep.
I just have one question, and maybe probably, the finance director may be able to respond to this question. It is, it is in the Committee of Neighborhoods. It's, it's legislation 0285-2019, and it is to support St. Stephen's Community House and approve the funding for, I think, for the organization's boiler, for $400,000. And I know that the funding is coming out of CDBG money. So my question is, just in terms of CDBG, are we looking at having, using CDBG to fund other initiatives similar to, this is, other initiatives in the community, similar to what we're seeing here?
Thank you, President Harden, Councilmember Tyson, and other members of council. He caught me off guard a little bit. Yes.
You're always ready, though.
I know. I'm always on, I'm always on my toes. Yes. So one of the processes we're going through right now is the capital budget, and one of the things that we're looking at is the use of not only CDBG money for design and possibly construction of projects in our opportunity neighborhoods, but also to look, to use the CDBG, CDBG money for these type of programs as well.
Well, I thank you for that, and I think that hopefully, council can work with the administration on certain, some of the requests that we may be getting that are similar to these, this type of request. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Are there any other comments on the Consent Action portion of the agenda, or questions? Seeing none, may I get a motion to... Seeing none, may I get a motion to... May I get a motion for the consent action portion by voice? Please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes, with the exception of 0372 and 0373-2019, on which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Favor. Remy?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, with the exception of 0373-2019, on which I'm abstaining. Consent action portion carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of thirty-day tabled emergency legislation. The first committee to come before counsel is the Finance Committee. That committee is chaired by Counsel Member Brown. Counsel Member Flores, yours.
Thank you, President Harden. I'd like to invite, I've got one ordinance in Finance, 0369-2019. I'd like to invite Experience Columbus President and CEO Brian Ross, as well as Vice President Charles Hill and Executive Director of the Greater Columbus Sports Commission Linda Logan to the podium, if you all are here. Ordinance 0369, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to contract with the Experience Columbus for marketing services to increase tourism and convention business and strengthen the image of the city of Columbus, and to authorize the expenditure of $10,472,000 from the Hotel Motel Excise Tax Fund. Each year, a portion of the hotel tax is distributed to Experience Columbus to promote our city through this ordinance. With that, I'll turn the podium over to you, Mr. Ross.
Well, thank you. Thank you, counsel president Harden, counsel Brown, and rest of counsel members. We appreciate you allowing us to be here. Sorry, fighting through a little bit of a cold. But we'd like to thank you for your smart, open, and progressive leadership. We are also very aware of the many challenges that face our city. We believe the travel economy, which welcomes 41 million visitors annually, representing $7 billion in visitor spend that supports 68,000 jobs and generates $48 million in bed tax annually, can play a significant role as a partner in addressing some of those challenges. 2018 was a record-breaking year for both Experience Columbus and the Greater Columbus Sports Commission. We booked over 525,000 room nights in the community. We also, as I mentioned, set a record with bed tax collections at $48 million. Some key accolades that we were able to garner. Expedia highlighted Columbus as one of the most exciting LGBTQ-friendly destinations around the world. Food &amp; Wine named Columbus one of the best food cities to visit in 2019. A sample of some of the groups that we hosted, the National Urban League, AVON, American Psychiatric Nurses Association, and American Trucking Association, just those four groups were over $13 million in visitor spend. Some new business that we booked in 2018, the International Literacy Association in 2020, United States Chess Federation, 2022 and 2024, the American Correctional Association for 2027, we're booking pretty far into the future, and Assemblies of God, 2020 and 2023, which those four associations and organizations added up to $39 million in estimated visitor spend. Already coming out of 2019 in the first few months, we've, again, had some great accolades for our wonderful city Columbus. We were named one of the New York Times 52 Places to Visit in 2019. We were ranked one of the best in Midwest on Chicago Tribune's Nine Must See 2019 Destinations, and we were named the top, or one of the top places to visit in the U.S. by TripAdvisor. A few new groups that we're hosting this year, the American Academy of Odiology, the African Methodist Episcopal Church, CNH, which is the Case New Holland Organization. Those three organizations are over $16 million just in this year for visitor spending. And of course, in August, I believe you all know who we're hosting, the American Society of Association Executives. It is a game-changer. We will have over 5,000 very influential industry leaders that will have the ability to bring their associations' conventions back to Columbus, which is over $500 million in economic impact in future years. So, we appreciate your support for that as well. And with that, we have one other thing that we're hosting this year that is very exciting. It's the Society of American Travel Writers Freelance Council. The SATW Freelance Council will meet in May and have over 60 freelance writers from around the country in Columbus. And this is important because this allows us to show the very best of our city to this influential group of writers who will generate positive media coverage which will boost our image and awareness of our community nationally. Just want to thank you for your support and partnership, and we look forward to raising the national profile of our great city together.
Thank you all. As Brian mentioned, counsel president, counsel members, city auditor, also our city attorney, thank you for all the support that you give us to do what we do with record-breaking years. This past year was really a defining moment on the sports scene as well, where our community rallied together to successfully save our soccer team. We hosted a hugely successful and impactful NCAA Women's Final Four and landed the 2020 NAGA Gay Softball World Series. So, those are just a few highlights from just the past year. And in 2019, our city will proudly welcome many returning groups and events to Columbus that include the USA Fencing's National Championships, USA Volleyball's Adult Open Championships, the NCAA Division One Men's Basketball Tournament, first and second rounds in just a couple of weeks, and the NCAA Division Two Women's Elite Eight. Some good accolades for us from ESPN that ranked us as the best Women's Final Four ever, and also Sports Travel Magazine voted the Women's Final Four the best sporting event of the year, beating out such events as the Men's Final Four, the Olympics, and the Super Bowl. Again, thank you for all that you do to support us, and we've only just begun.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Oh, sure. Counsel president.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Thank you to you both, to the Sports Commission and to Experience Columbus. 2018 was an amazing year because of the work that you've done. 2019 for Columbus is a huge year. Brian, would you talk about, a little bit more about ASAE, about what it is, why it's important to Columbus, how residents can get engaged, and finally, are we ready and will be, will we be ready? I say that because I traveled with you to the last ASAE in Chicago, and I can tell you there was some smack talking going on by other communities who say truthfully that they don't know if we can pull this off, that it was in Chicago last year, I think Toronto the year before that, and some other cities. Are we ready and will we be ready?
Great question, and thank you, counsel president Harden. We are ready, we will be ready, and we will make sure the naysayers walk away with a different view of our community. Yes, this is something that our community has earned over many years of hard work. We are on a stage where you just had the event in Chicago. They come to Columbus, they go to Las Vegas, they go to Dallas, they go to Atlanta. We are booking between the number two and number three most-desired meeting cities in the U.S. So, we're on the stage, we've earned our right there. Now, we're going to make some noise on that stage and make sure that these people understand coming back to Columbus, they will have a more unique and succinct experience than they will in any other of those communities. So, what it means to us is that we have not only all these great, we talk about the ROI of $500 million in future business from an economic impact standpoint. We also have every other Experience Columbus. So, choose Chicago, Atlanta CVB, San Diego, New York, all these cities are going to be in our city doing business. So, it is an opportunity that we could never pay for from a PR or marketing standpoint. You also have the Disney's of the world, the Hyatt's of the world, the Hilton's of the world, that are going to be in our city doing business. So, they're going to walk away from here with that wow, Columbus has got it going on. And people think about when Nashville, Austin started to evolve. We're in that same category. However, we're very different, and we want people to understand we are a very different destination, and we will be the premier visitor destination of the future. So, it is a tremendous opportunity. As far as residents, it is a closed show. It is just for the registrants, but there will be plenty of volunteer opportunities for all of us to come out and show our pride for this community from the time they walk off the plane or park their car, go to the many different events that are here for the four days. We will have many opportunities for the community to get involved.
Thank you, and I look forward to helping to encourage folks to volunteer, to participate. This is our opportunity to welcome folks to our community, and we want them to leave saying that this is the friendliest city that they've been in and that they felt welcomed, and that they see the diversity in the volunteers. We need to, we're telling a story to the nation over those four days, and so we want that story to be a story of diversity as well. So, thank you. We look forward to being...
Thanks. Counsel member Tyson, sorry.
Thank you, Chairwoman Brown. Just a couple of questions. Can you just share the date of the ASAE conference?
It is August 10 through 13.
Okay. And that, and also just the importance of having this conference because we want to make sure, as you just mentioned, in the future, we want people to come and have their conferences in the city of Columbus. And by having those conferences in Columbus, it will help, it supports our bed tax, and the bed tax supports, you know, affordable housing, the GCAC, the arts, human services. And so, it's so important, besides, again, providing individuals who work within that, who work within the tourism industry, but it absolutely is important to support these other initiatives in the city of Columbus.
Absolutely, and by having these organizations come by, come back, these are the professional organizations, for-profit, are typically based in Washington and Chicago. They go to a lot of first-tier cities, so they will come here and spend more money per person than most organizations, and obviously spend higher room rates. So, that will help the bed tax increase over the years. So, it is something that we're seeding the future for sure, paying forward.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ms. Logan and Mr. Ross, for being here and for your leadership in bringing ASAE in the first place. You can tell there's a lot of interest from counsel members about that. If there are no further comments or questions, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Counsel president, that's all I have in my committee.
Thank you. I will go to counsel member Remy, please, in the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I have ordinance number 0371-2019, to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into contract with the Greater Columbus Arts Council, Inc., for the purpose of fostering a sustaining art and cultural services that enrich the Columbus community and to authorize the expenditure of $7,142,000 from the Hotel Motel Excise Tax Fund. In 2019, the portion of the Hotel Motel Excise Tax proceeds budgeted for cultural services are projected to be $7,363,000, of which the Greater Columbus Arts Council will be provided 97%, or $7,142,000. These funds will be used to administer a variety of art and cultural programs and grants. The balance of the Hotel Motel Excise Tax projected receipts will be reserved for cultural arts programs and services contracted under the Columbus Recreation and Parks Department. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? If not, then I move for passage by voice.
Please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Ordinance passes. The next...
And that's all that we have in finance this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Next committee to come before counsel is the Public Safety Committee. That committee is chaired by Counsel Member Brown. Counsel Member Flores, yours.
Thank you, counsel president. This evening, the legislation 0426-2019, this legislation authorizes the Director of Public Safety to modify the existing contract with Change Healthcare Practice Management Solutions, Inc., for EMS billing, collection, and reporting services for the Division of Fire, to authorize the expenditure of $2,025,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. To provide you with just a little bit of background information, the city entered into a contract with Change Healthcare Practice Management Solutions, Inc., via ordinance 3233 in 2018, passed December 6, 2018, for EMS billing, collections, patient care, reporting, hardware devices, accompany, extra equipment, third-party auditing, training, and two onsite dedicated personnel as needed for the Division of Fire's third-party EMS reimbursement program, originally originated via an ordinance 1184-02, passed July 22, 2002. Public safety contract services of Change Healthcare for billing, collections, and reporting of those who are transported to hospitals by EMS personnel for emergency medical care. These billing, collections, and reporting services have been generated, a multitude of patient care information used by the Fire Division to better prepare EMS to respond to protocols and in turn respond to citizens in a more effective manner than they do currently. The Division also generates reports for various fire organizations that are cataloged nationwide. Revenue generated since inception of the program amounted to over $199 million at the end of December 2018 and is deposited into the city's general fund. If there are no questions, I move for my comments, for my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor. Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. I would also like to ask Assistant Chief Jeff Happ and Lieutenant Matthew Parrish to approach the podium as I read the next ordinance. To authorize the Finance and Management Director on behalf of the Fleet Management Division to establish a purchase orders for the universal term contracts with statewide Ford Lincoln, Inc., for the purchase of two Ford Explorers in support of the Rapid Response Emergency Addiction and Crisis Team, REACT, program to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $65,884 within the Public Safety Initiative subfund and to declare an emergency. Assistant Chief Happ and Lieutenant Parrish, would you please provide the community with some background information with regards to the REACT program and how these vehicles will benefit that program, please?
Yes, certainly. Thank you. Counsel President Harden, Safety Chair Brown, and fellow counsel members, on behalf of Safety Director Ned Pezzis Jr., Fire Chief Kevin O'Connor, and Assistant Chief Jeff Happ, I am Lieutenant Matt Parrish, and I currently oversee the division's initiatives surrounding the opiate epidemic. In 2017, the division partnered with Southeast Health to provide a response immediately after a member of the public was involved in an overdose to which CFD responded. That program, the Rapid Response Emergency Addiction and Crisis Team, otherwise known as REACT, responds to the scene or the emergency department in an attempt to locate that person within 24 to 48 hours of discharge and get them into treatment or connect them with the resources to assist in their road to recovery. The team consists of a social worker and a paramedic, and it was found that when CFD was involved, people were more likely to open the door and discuss their needs. Since the inception, the REACT program has expanded. For the last year, we have added a full-time social worker from Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging and has been assigned to the team. She has been a valuable tool in identifying resources that address the many obstacles facing those who want to enter treatment. One of the most unique cases, we found a foster family for a pet for an individual who wouldn't go to treatment because he didn't have anyone to take care of his dog. So, for 30 days, we found a foster family. Also, in January of 2018, the Mary Haven Addiction Stabilization Center on South High Street opened, providing a location for first responders can immediately take someone who wants to start treatment. We have also, through a grant-funded program, added a crisis intervention or CIT officer, police officer, to the team to assist when we do our outreach and follow-ups. In September of 2018, we were notified that the REACT program was selected to be the recipient of a portion of a larger two-year Bureau of Justice Assistant grant to expand our program. And through this assistance, we are adding a family and children specialist, we're adding additional medical coverage, and another social worker to provide case management. We also will have a program manager and an evaluation team. It's unfortunate that we have had to grow the program, but the opiate epidemic demand necessitates this growth. In 2018, the Columbus Division of Fire responded to 3,387 calls where someone had experienced an overdose. Through... Through the reach of the REACT program, over 1,000 individuals have been linked with treatment or other resources that will aid in their recovery. As is common with any new or pilot program, we initially utilized older backup vehicles that were borrowed from emergency services as we evaluated the effectiveness of this program. As the program has expanded, we have identified the need for reliable transportation that clearly identifies who we are in the community, and it's often the difference in someone opening the door to engage with us. I'm continually amazed and humbled by the faith and trust the community has placed upon the Fire Department and feel this is one of the main reasons we have experienced such early success. We cannot thank Safety Chair Mitchell Brown enough for his assistance in identifying funding for two larger vehicles for use by the REACT team. Councilmember Brown has been a huge supporter of the city's initiatives in the opiate response. His background and knowledge in EMS and public safety has been a catalyst for his support of initiatives aimed at assisting those with a substance use disorder. Thank you, and I'll attempt to any, I will attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Assistant Chief Happ, do you have anything you wish to add, sir?
No, sir, but thank you for all your support.
Any other questions for my colleagues? Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you. Chairman Brown, I just want to say thank you for your leadership that, and so Lieutenant Parrish, is that right? Lieutenant Parrish, certainly want to thank you and your team. When you get involved in the area of the addiction illness, as you can see, that it leads down other paths within those families. And so I'm just very thankful that you have gotten the funds even to add the additional team members to be able to help that family that is in crisis, because if you have someone in your home that has addiction illness, that creates stress on a household. And so I thank you for, and, and, see, Chief, not Chief Pettis, but say to Director Pettis, I really thank all of you for your leadership in that regard and being so helpful. And you're right, people want to open the door for fire, and so thank you for that. And again, Councilmember Brown, thank you for your leadership, ensuring that this helps to save lives and provides those wraparound services to those families. Congratulations.
Thank you. I think Lieutenant, why don't you elaborate a little bit on the national interest in the program, because nobody else in the country is doing what our Columbus Division of Fire is doing with regards to the relationship between fire and police and social workers?
Yeah, absolutely. Say, Chair Brown, this has been one of the most unique experiences of my 27-year career, and it's so outside the realm of what a typical paramedic does. And we have really created this co-responder model that is available to address any need when we go on these follow-ups, and it is impactful for the community and for the families. Early on, we recognized just the impact that this has taken and the number of grandparents that are raising grandkids that hadn't planned for this. You know, another unique instance that we were able, we helped a grandmother get a washing machine so she could do the laundry for her grandkids. She had no plans on raising all these young children. So it's just totally unique, the partnerships we have formed with not only the relationship with law enforcement, Sergeant Ayers, who's working here tonight as a member of our REACT team. We absolutely have created a reach in the community and started to create a community response for this community problem, and it's just amazing stuff.
And again, just one quick question. How many EMS runs do we do on a day that involve opioid overdoses?
So we're still in the eight to 10 range of overdoses where naloxone is administered, and our team is able to do somewhere in the realm of four to six outreach events each day or evening, and that's on a 24, 25-hour basic outreach schedule for the week, so.
If there are no additional comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you, Chair Brown. We're going to go ahead and get started in public service. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you very much. President Harden, I'm going to take a moment to do a brief announcement that relates to public service before we get into our ordinances. Just wanted to talk about potholes for a moment. As the season begins to turn from winter to spring, the City of Columbus Department of Public Service will be working hard to fill potholes throughout the city. Due to the extreme variance of temperatures this year, we expect an increase in potholes. Today, we've received around 2,600 pothole requests from the first of the year, and of those requests, the department has closed roughly 2450 or around 94%. In addition to that, they've also proactively investigated and found over 1,000 other areas that they've needed to fill. And so when we talk about service requests, it's not just one pothole, it could be a whole slew of them around one particular area. In fact, the number could be, not that we're counting, but the number is probably closer to 20,000 is the number that we've filled so far. Patching potholes is a City of Columbus priority and keeps our residents and visitors safe while traveling to and from school, work, and leisure. It is important that you, our residents, call 311 or to report potholes. That's 614-645-3111. Whether the pothole is in front of your home, next to a school crosswalk, or on your commute to work, we need you to inform the department where these potholes are so we can fill them promptly. Being as accurate as possible is very important. It's very helpful for the department. We are using a cold patch material at this point until the hot asphalt is being produced. So cold patch usually means that we will have to go back and do those potholes over again as the hot asphalt becomes available. We are prioritizing our potholes by P1, P2, and P3, so those that imagine that are more of a faster roadway and are more safe, we're trying to be mindful of safety. So if your cul-de-sac has a pothole, we may not get to that as fast as we might along around 315 and 670 in those areas. As always, I'd like to thank the hard-working women and men who fill the potholes, clean the streets, remove snow and ice, and much more in our city. We are very thankful for you and the work that you do. So, moving into our first ordinance tonight, I have ordinance number 272-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Service to allow for the donation of gently-used clothing items to various local nonprofit charitable organizations and to waive relevant sections of Columbus City Code 329 related to the sale of city-owned personal property. As the Environmental Committee Chair, I'm going to put a different hat on here now, I recognize the importance of finding ways to reuse and recycle materials in the City of Columbus. This legislation allows the Department of Public Service to donate used clothing items to local nonprofit charitable organizations, which allows us to take these textiles, cloth or woven fabric, fabric out of the waste stream. According to the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio, or SWOECO, textiles can take up to 8% of the Franklin County's annual waste stream. The tonnage potentially recoverable for textiles is over 78,197 tons. By passing this legislation tonight, the City of Columbus is able to further our mission to reuse and recycle as much as possible, including our used clothing. Just for a public service announcement, I know that goodwill takes used clothing and whatever they can't use as far as resale back into their shops, they do take those and recycle. So please take the opportunity to go to the website and understand a little bit more about recycling. This ordinance is certainly a step in the right direction for the City of Columbus. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Finally, I have ordinance number 0477-2019 to authorize the city's Chief Innovation Officer to execute a contract modification with HNTB Ohio, Inc., relative to the Smart City Challenge, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,500,000 from the Smart City Grant Fund, to pay for the contract modification and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And that's all I have this evening in public services and transportation.
Thank you, Chair. Seeing that it's 6:30, I'm going to ask for a motion for recess for zoning. Second, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
We will reconvene for zoning momentarily. Regular meeting number 10 will now come to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee, all members serving the committee. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zoning and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents, three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. The first ordinance is 0469-2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of 3332.035 R3 Residential District, 3312.25 Maneuvering, 3312.27 Parking Setback Line, 3312.29 Parking Space, 3312.49 Minimum Side Numbers, Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 3332.05 Area District Lot With Requirements, 3332.13 R3 Area District Requirements, 3332.19 Fronting on a Public Street, 3332.26 Minimum Side Yard permitted, and 3332.27 Rear Yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 49 South Huron Avenue to permit two single-unit dwellings on a lot with reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Yvonne Riggi. A proposed use is a two-single, two-single-unit dwelling on one lot. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Greater Hilltop Air Commission's recommendation is 1032. I first ask for a staff presentation.
The site is developed with a single-unit dwelling and a two-car garage in the R3 Residential District. The request of council variance will permit the conversion of the garage to a dwelling unit. Variances for reduced parking, lot with requirements, area district requirements, fronting, side yard, rear yard, parking space, maneuvering, and parking setback are included in this request. The site is located within the boundaries of the Greater Hilltop Plan Amendment, which recommends medium-density mixed residential land uses at this location. Although the proposal exceeds the density recommendation in the plan, Planning Division staff recognizes that the reuse of the garage as a dwelling unit has minimal impact on the development pattern for the area and is appropriately designed. The proposal increases the range of housing options by expanding the range of housing types and sizes in the Westgate neighborhood while also encouraging a more walkable and bikeable neighborhood through appropriate increases in density. Therefore, City's Department's recommendation is for approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you. Seeing none, is there the applicant in the audience to want to make a presentation? The applicant is not present, and we have three speakers.
She's in the front.
Oh, do you want to come up and make a statement? So Mr. Robert Glover is our first speaker. And he is saying he's for this legislation. Good evening, Mr. Glover.
Good evening. Good evening, President Harden and City Council Members. My name is Robert Glover. I'm a member of the BRED organization. I reside at 2235 on Gables Lake Drive in Hilliard, Ohio. And the BRED organization is located at 404 South Third Street. I support the ordinance up for this evening. I was born and raised in Columbus, Ohio, in the Hilltop area. I graduated from West High School and also attained my degree from in marketing at Franklin University. I love this city, and we have a booming economy and up-going downtown, and plenty of things to do. I wanted to start a family here in Columbus. My mother gave my childhood home to me after she no longer could take care of it, and I had to end up putting her in a nursing home. The cost associated with her stay was so expensive that I had to sell the house. I met my future wife also. We got married this past, two weeks ago, on February 9. You might think with two incomes, we could afford something affordable in Columbus. Between the two of us, our salaries combined about $80,000. With our car payments, rent, student loan debt, and other expenses, we barely had enough to make ends meet. Just before we got married, we looked all over the city for a decent place to live. We looked in Point Dexter Village, we looked in Easton, London, and on the west side in the Hilltop area. The rent ranged from $762 to all over $1,000. The places in decent communities were so high that we had restricted incomes, and our income was too high to meet that. Our income was too high also for public assistance, and we could barely find something affordable. We could find something affordable, but it was basically run-down neighborhoods. So I had to start looking at other places outside of Columbus, and that's why we decided to move to Hilliard. BRED is glad to know that Mayor Gunther is taking the initial steps of the bond package of the land trust. Research shows that more funding is needed to address the housing crisis here in Columbus. BRED has two requests. One, to encourage developers to set aside new housing units for families to make, that makes less than $42,000 a year. And two, give additional $5 million per year for the affordable housing crisis. What are your takes for the city to adopt this request?
Thank you, Mr. Glover, and I do know that we, I know BRED's been coming down every week, and we certainly have been sharing, as you just mentioned, the 50 million that's in the bond package. Certainly, Councilmember Shayla Favor, who chairs Housing, can certainly share more information with you and with BRED in regards to the work that we're doing with our developers in setting aside units for affordable housing. So I'll, we can probably contact Ms. Favor's office. Ms. Councilmember Favor, do you want to make any other comments to Mr. Glover?
No, please feel free to reach out to the office, and we'll schedule a meeting to discuss in further detail.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. The next speaker is, I think it's, is it Kristen Warren? Is it? And then John Brant will be speaking after Kristen Warren. Mr. Warren is, I'm sorry, if it's Chris.
It's Christian.
Christian. Thank you.
Yes. All right. My name's Christian Warren. I've been living in Westgate for over 10 years now, and I've seen what the rental properties do in that area. I'm just, I'm against the, that apartment zoning for 49 South Huron. Like I said, we've had, me and my neighbors, we've had several rentals in that area. One house actually finally sold to somebody, and he's doing a real good job keeping the house clean and uptight and all that stuff, but I just, I'm not really, I think that the area is there is too small to build, honestly, and I think it's just going to cause a lot more headache than it will do good for the neighborhood. That's all I really got.
And so, clear, you're against rentals?
Yes, I'm against that, the building of that apartment.
But you also said you own rentals?
Yeah, I own, no, I don't own a rental, no.
There's rentals in that community?
There was, there was a rental right down the street from us. We had a lot of drug activity that was in and out of the house. I'm not saying that this one will be that way, but it's just, it's not a good look for the neighborhood if, you know, if, say, if they happen to sell that off and somebody else goes in there and they're renting out dirt cheap to somebody else. somebody else goes in there and they're renting out dirt cheap to somebody else.
All right. So you, because you're concerned about drug activity?
Well, I'm just concerned with the resale of my house, too, honestly. That's gonna be, it's gonna be hard.
I'm sorry, the pre-sell of your home?
If I, if I decide to sell my house eventually, yes.
Oh, the resale of your home?
If I do decide to resell my house, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next speaker on this legislation is John Brant.
Hello.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Brant.
Thank you, Council, for hearing me. I'm John Brant. I live at 3042 Crescent Drive, directly behind the proposed rental, rental property. I have very serious concerns about the density of the neighborhood and the impact that it's going to have on our quality of life, the use and enjoyment of our property. I'm not alone in these concerns. My neigh, my next-door neighbor just spoke. My other neighbor on the other side of me that's also right behind the property is very much opposed. I don't think he was able to make it. He was on his way and couldn't get here. But as I said, we have strong reservations, strong concerns about the use and enjoyment of our, of our homes. The neighborhood's already very, very densely packed, both in terms of, of population density and in terms of how closely stacked the actual homes are together. I can tell you that when I take my recycle bin home from the front yard to the backyard, my recycle bin clears the fence between my house and the fence that's between myself and Matt by less than an inch. It scrapes. This just adds to the situation with that. There's been some discussion that at prior, prior meetings, there's been no criticism of, of the plan. I think that that is falsely assumed, because I can tell you that I got the notification of the prior meeting after the fact. So we were not able to respond to, to the initial, to the initial call for, for discussion. So as I said, the, the impact on our use and enjoyment of our houses, I'm absolutely convinced that this is going to negatively impact our property values. And I'm honestly not somebody who wants to, wants to make, make people not do what they want to do. You know, honestly, if they wanted to tear down their house and build a great big nice new house, I wouldn't have a problem with that. If they wanted to do all sorts of things, but adding an additional rental property, it seems, it seems like the wrong way to go for the neighborhood. There are all sorts of avenues to become a landlord. And I don't, I don't think that this is a great way or a great direction for the neighborhood or for our property values or any of it. I think it's entirely foreseeable that the applicants are going to ultimately move away in a couple of years, and this is going to be the beginning of their rental portfolio. So I just, I just really think that the Council should consider this negatively and, and not allow it.
And again, you mentioned that, I mean, because the Greater Hilltop Air Commission, they voted on this, but you said you weren't able to be at that meeting?
Not only was I not able to be at that meeting, but the notification of the meeting that was had, that was held, I believe it was someplace on Hague Avenue, the notification of the meeting arrived to us a day after the event.
Okay. All right.
Is there anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
We're gonna, thank you. Okay. Who's, Ms. Riggi? Is that you?
That's me.
Okay, so you had the opportunity just to hear from, from two of your, two residents that live near this property, and they are concerned against, one of the concerns was, I guess, the upkeep of the property, drugs, and of course, I mean, you have, you can't control property value. But can you real, can you share what your, the use of these two properties, what they will be in this community, and what is your role as a landlord in terms of having these two properties?
Yeah, sure. So I'm the architect of this project also, so I live there and I design, I'm going to be designing it. So I'm here with Des Augsberger, who's also the homeowner, and we, I mean, she's been living there for the past five years, and she's fixed up the place and put it on the home and garden tour. So she's invested in the projects long before I became part of it, but, so her, her stance on it and my stance on it is that we want to beautify this project, and we have no intentions of having any sort of tenants that might bring some sort of criminal activity to the project whatsoever. We saw this project being more as a long-term strategy for our own lives. Right now, personally, we might not have family now, but we will in the future. And then also, we have aging parents, so we're considering that also for flexibility and for our own situation, not only for the community, but our own situation, too. But either way, it's, we feel like it is providing affordable housing. If we decided to rent it out, we are going to be living there, so we are going to be basically watching over whoever is living there. So I think that in and of itself filters out the pool of applicants who might be wanting to rent from us if we did decide to rent it out.
Sorry, any questions? Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Are there any, I'm sorry, any questions for my colleagues on this? All right. Seeing none, I move to waive second reading.
Brown, Brown, favor, Reamy Tyson, President Harding.
Waived.
Thank you. And I also will, I mean, because it does have the approval of the Greater Columba, no Greater Columbus, the Greater Hilltop Air Commission's recommendation, and we normally support the recommendations of those commissions. What we will also do is we will certainly reach out to try to have, to find out if there was an issue with the notification process. But again, this commission is representative of the community, and they did vote in support of this. And so for that, I will, do you have a question, Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, Councilperson Tyson, again, you, you may mention about it, and I think it's important for the city in terms of notification process. If someone's saying they didn't find out about the meeting until after the meeting was already held, then I think that's a legitimate concern on the part to make certain that those notifications are sent out in a timely enough fashion so that everybody gets an opportunity to express themselves before a vote is passed rather than after, and then have to come down to Council and express their concerns.
Yes, and I certainly do agree with that and my comments, where we will certainly look into if there is some concern about notifications not being sent out on a timely basis. But there was a meeting, people did get notification because they did come to the meeting for them to be able to approve it. But, but, with a point well taken, and so now, if there are no other questions from my colleagues, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor, Reamy Tyson, President Harding.
Passed.
The next ordinance is 0489-2019 to rezone 1,000 East Dublin Grandville Road, being 9.5, 9.55 acres located at the northeast corner of East Dublin Grandville Road and Broad, Boardwalk Street from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to LM Manufacturing District and CPD, the Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is RCG Ventures LLC, care of Dave Perry, agent. The proposed use is a self-storage and commercial uses. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northland Community Council's recommendation was approval, 14, 14, 1, and 1. And so, there are no questions or comments, I first move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor, Reamy Tyson, President Harding.
Waived.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor, Reamy Tyson, President Harding.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0496-2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 3355.03 C3 permitted uses, 3311.28B requirements, and 3312.49C minimum numbers of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 26 East Fifth Avenue to permit a nightclub and medery with reduced parking in the C3 Commercial District and to repeal ordinance 1741, 2010, passed December 13th of 2010. The applicant is Brothers Drake LTD, care of Matthew Alt House, and the proposed use is a medery and nightclub. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the University Air Commission's approval, recommendation is approval, 12 to 1. If there are no questions or comments, I move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor, Reamy Tyson, President Harding.
I waived, sorry.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor, Reamy Tyson, President Harding.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0500-2019 to rezone 1640 East Mound Street, being 0.81 acres located at the northwest corner of East Mound Street and Seymour Avenue from R3 Residential District to AR2 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Juliette Bullock. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Air Commission's recommendation is approval, 14 to 0. If there are no questions or comments, I move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor, Reamy Tyson, President Harding.
Waived.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor, Reamy Tyson, President Harding.
Passed.
Thank you. And the next ordinance is 0501 to ask 2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 3333.18, building lines 3332.22, maximum side yard required, and 3333.23 minimum side yards permitted of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1640 East Mound Street to permit a multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the AR2 Resident Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Juliette Bullock. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Air Commission's recommendation is approval, 14 to 0. So if there are no questions or comment, or comments, I move to waive second reading.
Call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor, Reamy Tyson, President Harding.
Waive.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor, Reamy Tyson, President Harding.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in the zoning committee.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. Seeing no further business coming forward, the zoning committee, may I get a motion to adjourn? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor, Reamy Tyson, President Harding.
Zoning meeting number 10 is adjourned. We will reconvene regular meeting number nine momentarily. Can I get a motion to reconvene meeting number nine? Is there a second? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, favor, Reamy Tyson, President Harding.
We're back in regular meeting number nine. Next committee to go before council is the Economic Development Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harding. Before I get started in committee this evening, I do want to acknowledge our office does have three community hours scheduled for this week. So Tuesday, which is tomorrow, the 26th, will be at the Third Way Cafe, located at 3058 West Broad. On Wednesday, the 27th, will be at Tim Horton's, located at 3475 Cleveland Avenue. And then rounding out on Thursday, will be at the Columbus Metropolitan Library, the MLK Branch, on Thursday, the 28th, located at 1467 East Long Street. Thank you. So in the Economic Development and Small Business Committee, we have ordinance number 3469-2018 to create the Kenny and Henderson Community Reinvestment Area and to authorize real property tax exemptions as established in sections 3735.65 to 3735.70 of the Ohio Revised Code. As Columbus City Council and the Department of Development move through the implementation process of the new housing incentive policy, one of the proposed recommendations focuses on the creation of new community reinvestment areas. The goal of community reinvestment areas is neighborhood revitalization and stabilization. This ordinance will create the Kenny and Henderson Community Reinvestment Area and provide for real property tax exemption, excuse me, tax exemptions for residentially-zoned and used parcels within that area. This ordinance will also provide for exemption from increase in real property tax for construction of new housing and on the increase in valuation of building conversions from commercial use to residential use. Last week, myself, along with the Department of Development, convened a public hearing on the creation of the CRA, and the information was well-received within the community with some few, with a few concerns. I will turn it over to Director Shoney in order to provide us with some additional information about the CRA.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Harding, members of council. This is the first opportunity that we've had to bring a new community reinvestment area to council following our redesign of the city's incentive policies. We are bringing forward a piece that is consistent with the standards that we set out within the redesign of the incentive program, and we have followed the procedures that we outlined. To briefly overview, as it relates to setting up a new CRA, this starts with, for us, being approached by a developer that's interested in providing housing within our city, expanded housing within our city. We go through the process of talking with the developer, understanding the, the development, and then looking at the demographics and the development patterns in that neighborhood. We go through a process where we hire an outside consulting firm to rate the census tract in which the project is located across six different categories, based on how the census tract compares to the city as a whole. We then put it into one of our three abatement categories. In this case, the abatement area falls into the market-ready category, which means the developer must build a mid-rise development. It must include 10% of the units affordable at 100% of area median income and an additional 10% of units affordable at 80% of area median income. As we got into the Kenny and Henderson area specifically, it was not an area that actually, that honestly had been particularly on our radar, but as we looked at it, we see an area that is seeing development pressure. It is an area where if we do not do some things to encourage mixed-income development, we would see development of higher rent, higher-cost housing. We believe it is an area that presents many advantages for working families in terms of having great availability to multiple employers, whether it be access to downtown, access to the Ohio Health Campus, access to OSU, and honestly, access to points to the Northwest. So we are very supportive of this opportunity, and thank you for council once again for walking through this process with us. Whenever you try something new, it is always a learning process, so thank you for your cooperation in that.
Director Shoney, one of the critiques that came up at our hearing was the number of affordable housing units. Could you provide some additional information about the number of units that will be designated in this unit?
For this specific, thank you, Madam Chair, President Harding, members of council. For this specific project, it will be approximately 20 units at 100% area median income and 20 units at 80% of area median income. And again, this is just for this project. So any subsequent projects that come in and wish to take advantage of this incentive, they will have to be mid-rise development, and they will have to meet these requirements. Additionally, I should have pointed out when I was speaking earlier, because this is in a market-ready neighborhood, the benefits of the CRA will begin stepping down in the latter years with additional payment going to the schools starting in year 11.
Thank you for clarifying. That was my next point. If you could just clarify how... a 15-year tax abatement works in a market-ready CRA.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Harden, members of council. Beginning in year 11, the developer will have to pay 15% of what they would otherwise have had to pay to the schools. That grows to 30% in year 12, 45% in year 13, 60% in year 14, 75% in 15, and year 16, the abatement is fully burned off.
Thank you, Director Shoney. And I believe we do have one speaker slip that's turned in. Mr. Joe Motil, if he's still here. Good evening.
President Harden, Chairwoman Favor, members of City Council, Joe Motil, live at 167 West Cook Road, Columbus. CRAs were established for areas in which investment in housing has traditionally been discouraged. These areas also need to be distressed to qualify for a tax-abatement CRA. I've lived less than a mile from this proposed CRA for the last 13 years, and I've lived in the general area for most of my life. I drove around this proposed CRA on Saturday and could not find any evidence whatsoever of distress. The photographs from your housing condition survey that were taken are nothing more than minor code violations at best. Some peeling paint, minor concrete repair work that was virtually hidden from sight in the rear of a building that was at the furthest southeast corner of this CRA, they had to hunted to find it, a small section of rotted privacy fence, slight undermining of a porch stoop, and some yard waste that needed to be disposed of. I hope all of you had the opportunity to look at these photographs that should be in your pamphlets. Nothing out of the ordinary that couldn't have been found in any neighborhood of Columbus. And if these code violations are bothering certain people because when they look out their door and they don't like what they see, why didn't they just address it with code enforcement? If this is the criteria that you use so you can give tax abatements to your developer friends, then maybe we should just condemn every neighborhood in the city and declare blanket CRAs for all of Columbus. And then just think of all the money you could haul in from campaign contributions. Or maybe you're just working on behalf of a developer who wants to get their hands on Winterset Elementary's nine and a half acres of land that sits in the middle of this. This is not, by any stretch of the imagination, a distressed area, as Mr. Smith stated last week at the public hearing, as being a significantly blighted area. It's a stone's throw away from Upper Arlington, which is one of the wealthiest suburbs in Columbus with a median income of $103,000 and median property value of $338,000. And while there are people who are pleased that Kahoots has left the area because they don't like strip clubs, then lobby Sibby Hall to remove them from the zoning code. But for the mayor and the city council to use this strip club as an opportunity to play on the moral values of certain people and then use it as a 15-year, 100% tax-abatement district is a blatant misuse of office in the original intent of when and where CRAs should be used. The CRA will have an irreversible effect on this area while actually raising rents and property taxes and making the area less affordable to live in, and all for the benefit of at least this developer who is considering the immoral act to displace 80 families that live in a 55 and over trailer community in my Clintonville neighborhood just a few miles to the east of this proposed CRA so he can build yet another apartment complex. And in closing, if you allow this to be created, you are putting your own self-interest of money and power and campaign contributions ahead of working families and individuals of lesser means and forcing them out of their homes. And as far as I'm concerned, this is borderline criminal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Director Shoney?
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Harden, members of council. To Mr. Motil's questions about the Blight Study, we went through a thorough Blight Study. We feel that the Blight Study confer, or meets the standards set by the State of Ohio's codes, and we're confident in that.
Thank you. Are there any comments from my colleagues or questions?
Not so. Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. If I can repeat your question, I think it was that we acknowledged that there was an independent study of the...
An independent review of the study, is that correct?
There was an independent review. We do the Blight Study ourselves. The data that we use to classify the different areas is done independently.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or concerns? Well, as I previously indicated, we did, held a public hearing last week, and while we do appreciate Mr. Motil's concerns about the project, there were several additional speakers that did speak in support of the CRA for the Kenny and Henderson area of Columbus. And so I do want to ensure that everybody is understanding that this is not an approval of a zoning for this developer, that they will have to come back before Chair Tyson and continue to do what they need to do to make sure that the project is in line with the zoning code and things of that nature. But this is just, provides an opportunity for the creation of the CRA in this area. And we have heard that there is an absolute need for affordable housing in all sectors of Columbus, not just our urban corridors as well. Director Shoney?
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Harden, members of council. One other thing, I do want to preview for the members that we are getting interest from other areas around the city. We expect that we will be bringing some others forward. It's been interesting. We have gotten some interest in areas where honestly, we hadn't focused on the distress in some of those areas. And again, developers have brought to us some projects in areas that we hadn't paid attention to that need some new investment. So I'm hopeful we'll be bringing some other things forward to council in the coming months.
This is a question purely out of not knowing. Does CRA, is this track in line with any of the new opportunity zones? And how would that affect the ability for developers to engage in this?
Madam Chair, President Harden, normally I say thank you for the question because I usually can come up with an answer, but this one, I'm not sure that I know the answer. So, but thank you for the question anyway. I, I'm not sure. I do not believe it is in one of our opportunity zones.
Any additional questions or concerns from my colleagues? First, I'd move to take this from the table. This was tabled January 14, 2019.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Move from table.
And I would move for passage at this time.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
President Harden may move on to the Housing Committee.
Please.
In the Housing Committee, we have ordinance number 227-2019 to authorize the Director of the Development or his designee to execute any and all documents necessary for conveyance of title to the Central Ohio Community Land Trust to enter to an agreement with the Central Ohio Community Land Trust to spend $3.8 million to develop affordable housing. While serving as an Assistant City Attorney in the Columbus City Attorney's Office, I was responsible for the implementation of the city's Vacant and Abandoned Properties Initiative. Since the start of this program, the Columbus Land Bank, the County's Land Bank, and the Central Ohio Community Improvement Corporation, known as COSIC, has worked in close partnership to eliminate blight through enforcement, demolition, and rehabilitation. On February 1st, 2019, COSIC announced the creation of the Central Ohio Community Land Trust. COSIC, supported by the County Treasurer's Office and the Franklin County Commissioners, serves as the Franklin County Land Bank and will oversee the trust as its subsidiary. The partnership has resulted in the, excuse me, accumulation of multiple parcels in Columbus neighborhoods that are ready for redevelopment. This legislation will authorize the Director of Development to enter to this agreement with the new CLT and enter to any agreement and execute any deeds to transfer the properties to the CLT. Two weeks ago, I also convened a public hearing on the creation of the Community Land Bank, and it was extremely well-received, not only from members of the community, but also from our housing partners. I am looking forward to this exciting opportunity as our city continues to combat the affordable housing issue. Director Shoney, do you have any additional remarks?
Madam Chair, thank you, President Harden, members of council. A couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank council and Legislative Research Office in particular for your partnership in helping us get just to this point. I think this is an area that all of us have had a great deal of interest in. This council and this council's predecessors have been working very closely with us, so I do want to thank you and your team, and Andrew Dyer in particular, for the work that, and the research that you all have done on this issue. The other thing I would say at this point, and we've talked a lot about the land trust and the concepts, I think one of the things that was really enlightening from the hearing was the amount of education and outreach that we're going to have to do. It's clear, I mean, we've been living with this for nine months now and getting comfortable with the concept, and we've convinced ourselves that we understand it, and it's really helpful to have a hearing to remind you how much work there is to explain something as complicated as this. So that is going to be a big effort for us and for the County Land Bank, COSIC, going forward. So I'd just like to say, thank you for your support and your partnership on this.
Are there any questions or concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, may I move for passage?
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And finally, may I move on to the Utilities Committee?
Please.
Thank you. In Public Utilities, we have ordinance number 326-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Danberg Inc. for the Town Street Waterline Improvements Project, to authorize the expenditure of $1,723,697.89 within the Water Generational Obligation Voted Bonds Fund to provide for the payment of prevailing wage services to the Department of Public Service Design and Construction Division for the Division of Water and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with the Danberg Inc. The purpose of the project is to replace the existing 12-foot water main on Town Street from Fourth to Grant with a new water main. It is also there to replace the water main on Sixth Street with a new eight-foot water main as well. Replacement of these lines will improve water service, decrease burden on water, maintenance operation, and water loss. Are there any comments from Director? All right. Any comments from my colleagues? Questions? All right. Seeing none, I would ask that we move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, and that is all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Chair Favor. The final committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, President Harden. I have ordinance number 0220-2019 to authorize the Board of Health to modify existing contract with Equitas Health to continue to provide a harm reduction program called Safe Point through December 31st of 2019, to authorize expenditure from the Health Department's Special Avenue Fund and to declare an emergency. Ordinance number 1300-2017 was approved by council June 5th of 2017. This ordinance has been modified a significant number of times to be able to provide the services that I'll talk about in just a few minutes. It's been modified, this ordinance will be modified by increasing the contract in the amount of $350,000 for a total contract amount not to exceed $637,500 for a time period, December 31st of 2019 with Equitas Health. This modification is needed to continue the harm reduction program to opiate users. Harm reduction services provided by Equitas allow clients who are high risk of accidental overdose death to accept, to access the life-saving drug naloxone and receive a risk reduction, and receive risk reduction counseling and overdose prevention education. Through the third quarter of 2018, Safe Point provided services to 1,935 individual clients. 1,413 lives were known to be saved from using venarcam that was acquired from Safe Point, 1,413. The clients who participate in the Safe Point program are provided access to many types of care that address their active substance use disorder as well as the social determinants of health. Most of those wraparound services are needed. Throughout the 2018, Safe Point provided 1,489 referrals for alcohol and drug treatment and 116 linkages to medical care, and provided overdose prevention education to 1,500 individuals. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number 0415-2019 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept grant funds from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $4,727,019 for the Ryan Y. HIV Care Part A Grant Program to authorize the appropriation of $4,727,019 from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. The HIV Care Part A Grant's purpose is to improve access to medical care for persons living with HIV or AIDS living in Central Ohio. The goal of each client will achieve viral suppression, which improves the quality of life and reduces the risk of spreading the infection. In 2018, this program served over 2,400 people living with HIV and through several programs, including outpatient ambulatory medical care, mental health services, medical case management, early prevention services, housing service, non-medical case management, and emergency financial assistance and medical transportation. If you know of someone who is living with HIV or AIDS in our community in need of services, please contact Sean Hubert, the HIV Care Director at Columbus Public Health at 614-645-6522. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0457-2019 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Central Ohio Hospital Council for the Ohio Better Birth Outcomes Collaboration Grant in the amount of $100,000 to authorize the appropriation of $100,000 to the Health Department, in the Health Department's Private Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. This grant program supports the initiatives My Baby and Me Tobacco-Free Program at Columbus Public Health by providing funds for additional staff support. In 2018, the program enrolled 203 participants and received over 800 referrals, making it, making it the largest Baby and Me Tobacco-Free Program in Ohio. Of the 2018 program participants, 95% remained smoke-free through the baby's first year of life, and 90% of the program graduates delivered full-term healthy babies. This is an initiative that's so important to our Celebrate One program. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. And the final ordinance I have this night, this evening, I'm going to ask Priam Chotsky, Director of the Community and Legislative Strategies, and from the mayor's office, to please come to the podium. And it's, and she'll speak to this ordinance, and it's ordinance number 0463-2019, and it's to authorize the Board of Health and the mayor's Celebrate One program to accept a grant from the Franklin County Department of Job and Family Services to implement a Safe Sleep Campaign and Neighborhood Initiatives for Celebrate One in the amount of $930,000 and to authorize the appropriation of $680,000 to the Health Department and the Health Department Grants Fund and $250,000 to the mayor's office and the General, and the General Government Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. Priam, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Tyson, Council President Harden, and members of council for the opportunity to speak on the recent county grant received for Celebrate One in partnership with Columbus Public Health. Celebrate One and Columbus Public Health were awarded $930,000 from Franklin County Job and Family Services and the Board of Commissioners to implement a Safe Sleep Campaign, Community Community Health Worker Training, and Neighborhood Initiatives. Sleep-related deaths are one of the leading causes of infant mortality in our community, and most infant deaths are preventable. The Safe Sleep efforts will focus on crib distribution to over 750 qualifying families and communication media services that promote implementation of the ABCs of Safe Sleep and Safe Sleep Ambassador trainings throughout our county and in our Celebrate One neighborhoods. Community health workers continue to be an important link between our residents and the services provided by many organizations to support pregnant and parenting families in our community. The Ohio State University College of Nursing provides the training necessary to become a certified community health worker. These funds will allow 75 residents to receive this training for free and to be paid while attending classes and complete an internship through a local agency. Once the certification is received, many employment opportunities are available to the graduates, including community connector positions through Celebrate One, becoming home visitors, and working within any of the four health systems in our community. We are grateful for the Franklin County Board of Commissioners for their continued support in our neighborhood initiatives. This year, they will include teen reproductive health education, neighborhood interventions, and digital service integration in our high-priority neighborhoods. Celebrate One has leveraged our community's strong health and human services network, targeting our investment directly into programs serving the neighborhoods that have experienced the highest rates of infant mortality. Celebrate One has cultivated public-private partnerships to build their capacity to respond to community needs by convening and supporting collaborations among local healthcare providers, businesses, ministries, and community advocates driven to save more lives. With this grant, Celebrate One has the opportunity to deepen our community engagement to our most vulnerable expectant mothers. We are confident that our collective efforts will succeed. Thank you.
Priam, I just have one quick question, and then I have a statement also. But I'm excited that you're also focusing on teen reproduction and just talking about sexual health. I think that's very important, as you've heard earlier in this evening. The other question I'm going to ask, are we still giving pack-and-plays, or are we moving to a different type of crib? Could you respond to that?
Sure, we're still getting pack-and-plays.
Okay. And here's something that I heard, and just something to think about, is that, and I heard this at a meeting I was at on Saturday, is that some moms don't want to necessarily, because the pack-and-plays are like on the floor, and that some mentioned that they weren't necessarily, for various reasons, having the babies that close to the floor. And so, as we continue to move forward, I think that we may need to think about higher cribs, because this mom was saying that she'd prefer to, even though that's certainly unsafe to put the baby in the bed, because the bed's higher up than the floor. So, just some things to think about as you, I know you're doing great work and focusing on all the different needs, but there's just something that came up recently, and I wanted to share that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We are looking into different options. We've heard that from community partners as well.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for your work, and really, we're very happy that Franklin County Department of Job and Family Services is providing these dollars and also providing training opportunities for individuals to be able to gain these skills and then hopefully be able to work in our community. So, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Councilmember...
Oh, we have a question.
Sorry.
Not a question, just that there is a pack-and-play model that has an elevated crib.
Yes, and I think...
So, it's probably more expensive, but just FYI.
Yeah, and those are the newer ones we received, where it's a little bit higher off the ground. There's like a netted space for the baby, so, yeah. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Alone, on the back, in an empty crib.
And that's why, Councilwoman Brown, when you're hearing people say they don't want their babies to be in a pack-and-play that's low, that they wanted their babies to be up higher, because some conditions, yeah, and we need to think about that higher model. Yeah, so that can help, so those families won't have those concerns, because we don't want people having their babies in the bed with them.
Right.
Right. Thank you. All right. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, Chair Tyson. Seeing no further business to come before council, may I have a motion to adjourn? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned.